Okay, please rise accompanying us tonight on the Star Spangled Banner is Jane Howard. Ms. Howard?
(Music) 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 (Music)
Thank you very much, Mrs. Howard. Welcome to the 2016 Special Town Meeting. We have a short warrant tonight, about eight articles. We're going to ask that we keep all our, any announcements or resolutions or anything else that's going to be announced today strictly confined to those eight articles with the exception of one thing Mr. Greeley has. I'd like to take a moment to recognize...quiet. Roland Chaput passed away this past weekend. Roland was a longtime member, he's 44 years of town meeting member. He was a member of the redevelopment board, the conservation committee, the Friends of Robbins Farm, the Dallin Museum, the Torres Council. He was on a lot of committees over the years, so I just want to take a moment of silence for Rowley. (Silence) One other announcement. Elsie Fury took a fall the other day. She broke her arm and her nose, so she's just out of rehab, so if you want to send her a note, you're thinking about her, she's at 58 Mott Street in Arlington, you can find that on the website. She's now our longest-serving town meeting member. Are there any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? Hey, we know who they are if they don't, because it clickers. If not, I recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Greeley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is requested that members of the Board of Selectmen, elected officials of the town, town manager, department heads of the town and staff, superintendent of schools and staff, committees, commissions and boards of the town, Minuteman Regional Vocational Technical School District Committee and Superintendent, members of the General Court representing Arlington, and also any consultants who have been retained to work for the town relative to articles to be acted upon by this meeting, representatives of interested parties of Article One and representatives of the news media be permitted to sit within the special town meeting enclosure.
Second? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Hearing none? Madam Clerk, do you have reason to believe that this meeting was appropriately called by the Board of Selectmen and that the constable made a return of service on the warrant according to the bylaws? She signifies yes, she does. Mr. Greeley?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that in the unfortunate circumstance...I'm sorry, that's not there, sir. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the special town meeting is not disposed of at this session when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Wednesday, January 27th at 8:00 PM.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed?
No!
It's voting, I saw to clear it. Couple of things. Put your cellphones on vibrate, please. And we're going to be using our clickers tonight. I notice a few folks haven't checked in, but we have a test question. Michael, ready? The test question's going to be, are we going to get more snow this year than we got last year? We have a new toy, a voting light. So when Michael gives us the cue, it's ready to vote...when he figures it out over there, it's going to go green. While the light's green, you can vote, so go ahead and vote.
(Inaudible)
One is yes, two is no, and three is, uh, you abstain. So one is yes, two is no, and three is abstain. Remember, it's the last time you click, so don't put your clicker down because you may re-vote without knowing it until the light's gone out. Yes, Michael?
(Inaudible)
You're going to restart it? Okay. This is why we have a test question, work out our bugs. (Silence) We have a green light.
(Inaudible)
(Laughter) Hey, I'm a heck of a lot closer. Okay, yeah, and go ahead and vote. Oh, look, he has a little clounder for us as well. One yes, two no, three abstain. (Silence) Alright, so the time's up, but the machine's still counting. And we got a green light still, Michael. Oh. Oh, it's still counting. I guess it has to poll the room a few times and make sure it got all our votes. Ready? Alright, so no. Nos win, we're not going to get any more snow. And do the thing, make sure your vote came upright, please.
(Inaudible)
Eric, you forgot to vote.
(Inaudible)
Okay. Uh... Quorum 62? Sixty-two people's a quorum. Mr. Greeley, do you have an announcement?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Since our last town meeting, we have four new members of your executive team. I'd like to introduce to you a position we have not had in Arlington before. We have our new facilities director, please welcome, if you would, Ruth Bennett. Ruth, I believe was over here. (Applause) We lost Andrew Flanagan, our deputy town manager, to become the town manager in Andover. He's been replaced by our new deputy town manager, most recently from Amherst. Please welcome, Mr. Sandy Poole. (Applause) We lost our director of planning and community development to Lexington. Please welcome our new director of planning and community development, Jennifer Raitt. (Applause) And we lost our comptroller to golf. Most recently coming to us from Everett, please welcome our new comptroller, Mr. Richard Viscay.
Welcome you all to the town of Arlington. Usually new people get a pass on a town meeting, this is it, so be ready in May or April. Any other announcements or resolutions? Seeing none. Article One, reports of committees.
Mr. Moderator, I move we receive the report of the Board of Selectmen.
Seconded, all in favor? It's so received. Thank you very much, Mr. Greeley. (Silence) Mr. Tosti, go ahead.
I move that the report of the finance committee be received.
All in favor? So received. Mr. Moderator, Charles Foskett, Precinct Eight. I move that the report of the capital planning committee be received. All in favor? It is so received. Mr. Cole?
John Cole, Chair of the permanent town building committee, move to have our report accepted.
Received. All in favor? Report of the permanent town building committee is so received. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Mr. Greeley, the toss, you're following my agenda here. Mr. Tosti?
I move that the report of the finance committee be received.
All in favor? So received.
Mr. Moderator, Charles Foskett, Precinct Eight. I move that the report of the capital planning committee be received.
All in favor? So received.
Mr. Moderator, Charles Foskett, Precinct Eight. I move that the report of the capital planning committee be received.
All in favor? It is so received. Mr. Cole?
John Cole, Chair of the permanent town building committee, move to have our report accepted.
Received. All in favor? Report of the permanent town building committee is so received. Any other reports of committees? Seeing none. Um...Mr. Greeley, the toss, you're following my agenda here. Mr. Tosti?
I move that the recommended votes contained in the respective reports of the finance committee and Board of Selectmen be before the meeting without further motion.
All in favor?
No.
Opposed? They are before the motion without meeting, without additional motions.
I move that Article One be laid upon the table.
All in favor, please, Article One upon the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Or, yes, I'm sorry, all opposed, Article One is upon the table. That brings us to Article Two. We have a force, a recommended vote of the finance committee. Mr. Tosti, are you going to speak to that?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Schlickman?
(Inaudible)
Yes, Mr. Foskett?
(Inaudible)
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Thank you very much. So, because Article Two and Three are very similar, we're going to have all discussions for Article Two and Three now, and that we're then going to have separate votes as in our booklets for Article Two and Three, so just as a matter of convenience for everybody and not to have duplicate discussions and questions, so Article Two and Three are technically before us. Thank you, Mr. Foskett, appreciate that. Mr. Schlickman?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Schlickman. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct Nine. I am Chair of your school committee. I was in this hall in 1997. In fact, I was the Minuteman School Committee member from Arlington at that point when this whole story started. We had a debt exclusion to renovate seven elementary schools for the purpose of providing equity across town and quality facilities. We had schools held together with duct tape. The vote, we lost it. We thought we lost by 13 votes, we had a recount, a recount with the hanging chads of 1997, and we ended up losing by 34 votes. Pressured by the state because the deadline for getting local funding was two weeks away, and the shovels needed to go into the ground, and we would have lost it all if we failed. 1998, we put three schools up, Hardy Bishop Brackett, 80,004 votes yes, 5539 no, a 59.1% win. We followed up with the other four schools in 2000, 7192 yes, 2793 no, a 72% win for that debt exclusion. This proved to you when we split it up and said, okay, maybe it's not your turn now, but we need you to vote for the schools across town, people said yes. And the people in the Stratton community consistently said yes for all the other schools, and they were hosts for the children who were moved out of the other schools. They've been a great neighbor. They deserve the equity and quality that the other six schools have had, and that's what we're doing here tonight, finishing a process we started 19 years ago. And to talk to you more about the exact details of the equity and quality we're going to see as a result of your affirmative vote tonight is our Superintendent, Dr. Kathleen Bodie.
Dr. Bodie?
Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval for funding for the Stratton renovation project and for the modular classrooms needed to house the Stratton students during the 2016-17 school year. The completion of this project will fulfill the promise made to the community over 19 years ago to rebuild or renovate all seven of Arlington's elementary schools. While some renovation work was completed at Stratton in 2011, the work was limited to the classroom wing. Windows were replaced, roof installed, the HVAC and electrical systems were updated in that part of the building only. Work on the remaining part of the building was deferred until a more comprehensive plan was developed. In December 2017, we formed the Stratton Building Committee composed of myself, the deputy town manager, CFO, Stratton principal, and representatives from the school committee, teachers, parents, as well as a representative from the finance committee, the capital planning committee, and the permanent town building committees. The charge was to investigate what renovations would be needed at Stratton so that its facilities had parity with the other elementary schools. During that process, the challenge was to define what is parity, and then to be able to provide to the capital planning committee a report on that plan the following August 2014. So I said the challenge was to find what parity meant. Parents, teachers and staff were surveyed, meetings were held, the committee took field trips to other schools, data on rooms and comparison of facilities, both in square footage, and types of room were compared. We also reviewed the inside onsite report. Through this process, the committee was able to identify the key renovations and upgrades that were needed in order for Stratton to have facility parity with the other schools. The infrastructure that was not upgraded in 2011 needed upgrading, as well as there was a general improvement to the cosmetic appearance of most parts of the school. The kitchen needed to be remodeled so students were not being served lunch in the hall. The library needed expansion because it was about half the size it should be for the number of students in the school. And the nurses' office was deemed too small and needed to be expanded. The school also needed a conference room, which it did not have. The building committee hired, with the support of the town, town manager and the capital planning committee, the architectural firm, DRA, to help develop plans and cost estimates. A plan was submitted to the capital planning committee that presented four scenarios with cost estimates for the scope of work needed to achieve parity. The scope of the work was planned out in timelines over 10 years, five years, three years, and 14 months. The longer the timeline to complete the project, the greater the cost. The capital planning committee chose the shortest timeframe. This option was desirable not only because it minimized costs, but it concentrated disruption in a shorter window of time, and probably most importantly was giving Stratton community the renovated school it had waited a long time for. This scenario requires that we lease temporary modular classrooms for next school year so that we do not have, because we do not have the room capacity in our other schools to accommodate all the Stratton students, unlike how we were able to during the Thompson construction. On the screen...soon, on the screen, you will be looking at the floor plan for the central part of Stratton that will be renovated. The key changes are the library will no longer be located in this part of the building in order to be able to expand the kitchen and serving area, as well as the nurses' suite, and also a space to provide a conference room. The teachers' workroom and cafeteria will still remain in this section. This part of the building also contains the kindergarten rooms, so in addition to the infrastructure work there, they will be adding bathrooms to that part of the building.
Dr. Bodie, do you need more time?
Just 30 seconds.
Okay. I'll grant you the time because this is important.
Thank you. And what you see here is the floor plan for the new library and a rendition of what it will look like. For those of you that know the Stratton building, you'll know that this was, it was the old gym that was at the far end of the classroom wing. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but in advance, I want to thank you for your support of this very important project.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cole?
I'm going to grab a pointer over here and put up some new slide.
Yeah.
John Cole, Chair of the permanent town building committee. I've got to work from this side of the room. I think I'm here for color commentary because a lot of my comments have already been made. We shall begin. First, I'd like to recognize a few members of the building committee who are in the hall this evening. Ms. Daridi, Ms. Damar, Mr. Chaplain, Ruthie Bennett, and Bill Hayner. Did I miss anybody? We are also joined by Scott Wooden, Principal Architect from DRA, who is in charge of the building program at Stratton, and will be available for any questions later in the Here we are at the Stratton School. The, um...oh, excuse me. Is there a microphone I can walk with? No. Okay, how about that?
Go around to the other side of the podium. There you go.
Quite as attractive.
That's okay, they're looking at the screen now, you.
Okay, how do I get this thing to go? There we go. Whoa, 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 whoa. Alright, we're going to get there yet. So there we are at the Stratton School. On the right-hand side, this is the wing that was renovated in 2009, 2011. I remind you that about a third of the cost of that was reimbursed by the state under the Green Schools Building Program, which was set up to recharge the economy after the financial collapse in 2008. This is the proposed floor plan of the renovation, which you saw from Superintendent Bodie. Now I'm giving you the color version of it. The main feature on this floor, the plan is too big to fit on one page, so that cut line is actually where the two halves connect. Here are the renovated kindergarten rooms, cafeteria, gymnasium, the reconfigured food service area, admin, classroom block, music and art. Lower level, as Dr. Bodie mentioned, has additional classrooms for the upgrades, and the crown jewel of the project is the new media center in the repurposed gymnasium. That's the plan. It's fairly simple. What is complicated are the logistics. Number one, as mentioned, we have no place to house the Stratton students during the construction period because the other district schools are near or at capacity. So we are proposing to lease modular units here, which would be plugged into the west end of the building, and during the construction period, we are proposing to use the gymnasium here and the cafeteria as an adjunct to the basic classroom modules. These are what the modular units look like. They are, they will be designed and fabricated to the school department specifications and then leased by the town through the 2016-17 school year. The schedule is where things get a little tricky. What we basically have to do here is align the town's funding cycle with the optimal construction sequence to get everything done within a compressed timeframe of 14 months. That's basically why we have asked you to spend a night with us in a cold January, to advance the funding so this project can start a little bit earlier. Let me explain. Whoops, go back one. We are here tonight, town meeting. We need to have fabrication of the modular units starting very soon so they can be on site in early May. That will allow them to become a warehouse over the summer to receive educational materials and reuse furniture from the existing school. At the same time, we are completing the development of the architectural plans for the renovation of the existing building. That will be bid next month, we'll have real numbers in March. That way, we can start the construction process June 23rd, the day after school is out. Over the summer period, we need to complete the renovation of the cafeteria and the gymnasium so they can be part of the school for the next school year. And I need one more minute, if you please, Mr. Moderator.
Yep, just about two.
The budget is a little bit dark here, but I can go over it with you. I believe you have a copy in your handout. For the modular units, we have bids in hand. We are ready to sign a contract this week pending approval. The contract amount is a little over $3 million. We need about $100,000 in contingency for site work for a total of $3.1 million. On the general construction for the renovation of the school, we do not have hard bids in hand at this moment because of the compressed timeframe the architect had to work in. What we have are 90% construction drawings, which have been estimated by both the architect and a third-party estimator hired by the building committee. They have come up with a number of $9.5 million as the cost of the renovation of the Stratton School. On top of that, we have soft costs, which will be items purchased directly by the town, the furniture, the technology, and professional fees. And then owner contingency, $1.2 million. That is basically our safeguard. In the event, unlikely, I hope, that the construction bids come in above our projection, we will be able to execute a contract and keep this project on schedule, rather than having to come back to the town meeting in the spring, which would push the construction out four to six months. I would like to thank the school committee, the school department, the architect, finance committee, capital planning, for their creativity and flexibility in developing this plan for your review tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cole. Mr. Foskett?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Charlie Foskett, Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator? Sorry. Charlie Foskett, Precinct Eight, and Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, and we'll try to use this, discuss some of these issues. So the first, first point, I just wanted to outline the things that we'll talk about, some of which you've heard from some of the speakers earlier. The April 1st, 2000 debt exclusion, the total project that we undertook, what's been accomplished to date, the funds available, and the vote. This is just a summary of what was explained to you by Chairman Schlickman a little bit, a few moments ago, where the 2,000 debt exclusion for the four schools, Pierce, Dallin, Stratton, and Thompson, won by a 72% to 28% majority. So I think we can safely say that after all these years, the vote... So I think we can safely say that after all these years, the voters did indeed support the renovation of the Stratton, and they still do. That's a little small to read, but let me just say that one of the reasons why we're here sixteen years later is that, is that the original state funding for the school program from the School Business, School Building Administration Board was frozen by Governor Romney during a fiscal crisis in the early 2000s. Then the over-budget and under-water SBAB was actually closed down and replaced by the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And that created about a five-year hiatus in our overall program. And when we finally got on to seeking support from the MSBA, the MSBA declined to fund the Stratton. So all of the burden of the Stratton really rests with Arlington taxpayers. This is a little schematic of the various, the seven schools that were rebuilt over time and what they, what they cost. You can see graphically, the bracket was in the $9 million range in 1998, and the Thompson was just under $20 million in 2013. And we're looking at a cost of about just under $16 million for the Stratton in 2016. Now, one of the questions that taxpayers and voters might be concerned about is what's the actual exempt tax impact on the taxpayers for this program? And on this chart, which is also, I believe, in the Capital Planning Committee's report that's in your hands, you can see, using the DOR inflation rate, the original estimated cost of the four schools, the actual cost over time, and then the construction cost in nominal dollars, and the actual construction cost discounted back in $2,000. So in the lower right-hand corner, that $42,643,000 means that the total expenditure exceeded the $34 million that was originally proposed by the school department. But this is, the question is, what was actually the tax increase that the voters have faced over the years during this time? If we look at this next slide, which is also in your capital planning report, you see the proposal for how we're going to fund the $15,793,000. And it comes from a combination of non-exempt capital budgeting, which is inside the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2, some savings from other capital projects, which we'd call a capital carryforward, for a total non-exempt contribution of $9,46,206. That leaves an exempt debt requirement of $6,746,794, which can be further reduced by a planned asset sale, by, an asset sale planned by the town, which will reduce it by another $1 million. So what's the impact on the actual exempt tax that the taxpayers are looking at compared to what they were told back in 2000? And that's in this chart, which is also in your capital planning report. And basically, on the screen behind me, the red line is the, is the, assuming the original reimbursements of 63% in the first two schools and 50% in the second two schools, the total expenditures discounted back to $2,000 are shown by the red line. The blue dotted line shows what the actual expenditures, including the $15,973 for Thompson, for Stratton, are. The reason why these two come out so close is because, first of all, the town is using non-exempt capital planning dollars to fund some of these school projects, especially the Thompson and the Stratton. And secondly, in the case of the Thompson and in the case of the Stratton, the town has made the decision to dispose of some assets to help contribute towards the payment for these funds. So we've used non-exempt borrowing and the sales of assets to constrain the tax impact on the voters. So the planned impact from sixteen years ago is very close to the actual impact, in fact, the actual impact is under the planned impact of 2016 years ago. So I think from the viewpoint of meeting the objectives from the academic program to renovate all seven schools and to meet the financial objectives set before the taxpayers, the commitment to the taxpayers was met. So we respectfully ask that you support Articles 2 and 3, which will complete the renovation of the Stratton School and will actually complete the renovation of the seven school program that was started in 1998, as Paul Schlickman reported to you. So we ask you to support the recommendation of the Finance Committee on Articles 2 and 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foskett. Ms. LaCourt?
Annie LaCourt, Precinct 15. I would like to have a resident of the town, the President of the Stratton PTO, Jane Morgan, speak to the meeting for a few minutes.
As a town resident, she has a right to speak and address the meeting.
Ms. Morgan?
She should come forward.
She's coming.
Name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Jane Morgan. I live at 172 Brattle Street in Arlington, Precinct 15. I'm a Precinct 15 resident. I'm a mom of four kids. I have a third grader at Stratton. I have two first graders at Stratton, and I have a two-year-old. So we are going to be at Stratton for like another decade, which is great. It's really good, and we really want to be there. And I'm here to speak very briefly in support of both Articles 2 and 3. For Article 2, on behalf of the parents at Stratton, we appreciate the town and the school department have found an appropriate solution to the challenging problem of where to house the Stratton community during our renovation. Using modulators on-site at Stratton keeps our school community together at a time when no other elementary school was in a position to accommodate us. As a host school for all the other elementary school rebuilds, we recognize that next year will require some patience and adjustment, but we look forward very much to watching our school rebuild happen in real time. In terms of Article 3, as an elementary community, we are appreciative of the town's continued commitment to rebuild all of Arlington's elementary schools, and we're grateful that it's our turn. We feel as though the school department has been especially open to working with Stratton parents during the feasibility and design phases of this project, and their spirit of openness and collaboration really make our families real stakeholders in the process and also the final outcome. I've seen some of the sketches and mock-ups and some of the ideas that we're looking at, and I know that my kids are going to feel as though they're walking into a very new, very functional, and very updated space. So I'm really looking forward to that in September 2017. So we would like to thank members of the school department, the school committee, the Permanent Town Building Committee, the Capital Planning Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Town Manager's Office for their dedication and commitment to the Stratton project, and we hope that you will vote in favor of Articles 2 and 3 tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
For myself, I would just like to say that I'm very much looking forward to finally having a construction project in my front yard.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harrington, Stephen?
Stephen Harrington, Precinct 15. I had a couple of questions. Generally, I answered more of this, you know, it's time, twenty years to get this to done. I'm glad that Mr. Cole spoke. He gave the reason why we have to do it now, the compressed cycle. But, you know, it still feels like we're being rushed to do something. And so, I'm not opposed to this, but I'd like to ask some questions, Mr. Moderator, if I may. When I look at the Capital Planning Committee Report and the voted language, Article 3, specifically, it says that there's $499,268 coming from the Phase 3 Community Safety Building Renovation Project. Does that mean that that project is completed? Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Foskett? Or Mr. Cole, either one can answer the question.
John Cole, Permanent Town Building Committee. The final phase of the Community Safety Building is nearing completion. We expect it to be done in August or September. Project is going along very well, contrary to prior phases, which were total nightmares. And we have voted as a committee to release $500,000 back to the town for use on other capital projects.
So the project's done? Or will be in September?
Will be done in August.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had, we saw Mr. Foskett show us, you know, sort of the, if you look at your Capital Planning Report on Page 3, you'll see that, you know, there's $42 million has been spent in actual construction costs in $2,000 versus $34 million for project value. You know, that all depended on what rate of inflation you use. And I'll draw your attention to like 2004 through 2008, where the rate of inflation was 5%, 6%. And, you know, there's a footnote that says how it's supposed to be calculated, and it's the CPIU for Boston, Brock, and Nashua, and those aren't the numbers. When you use the numbers from the CPIU, it comes out to $46 million. So the difference from 34 that the voters approved and the actual expenses today of $46 million isn't quite as compelling that somehow the voters agreed to overspend it by, you know, more than 35%. Finally, I'd like to make one more point. In the non-exempt monies that were transferred over in Mr. Foskett's presentation, he had $1 million for a sale of a building. That building is a former DAV up on Mass Ave, up near the, there's some tire place up there. And that building's assessed for $300,000, a little more than $300,000. And so, it's quite generous to say, oh, there's a million dollars that were taken off from the sale of a building so that we somehow fit in under the cap that the voters approved back in the year 2000, the $34 million. In fact, it's nowhere near a million dollars. It's more like $340,000. It's a dump. So I'm sure that that million is overly optimistic. So given the rate of inflation change and the over-optimistic, it looks to me like we're actually not doing what the voters approved in 2000. So be that as it may, I'll still vote to support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. I might have missed this, but I have one very quick question. What is the current capacity of the Stratton? And does this capacity stay the same, or does it increase, given our pressures in that regard, after the rebuild?
Dr. Bodie still here?
No one mentioned the capacity.
Dr. Bodie's getting your answer.
Kathleen Bodie, Superintendent. We have about a little over 400, 412 students. When Stratton is completed, we have three classrooms that could be repurposed, and the same thing will be true after the renovation. With the projection that we have from December from Dr. McKibben's numbers, Stratton is only going to change slightly in enrollment, maybe in the neighborhood of 20 to 30 students, perhaps tops.
But in the new configuration, there's some swing space as required. The rooms that could be converted, you mentioned, that would be swings.
There'll be three classrooms. They will be used, but they could be converted to additional classroom space, yes.
Okay. And they'd be used for art or music now? Or just?
We will have an art and music room. The goal in all of our schools is to keep a dedicated art and music room.
Okay. I just, I just didn't understand what the, what the stated capacity of the building is versus now, versus the future, versus the current number of students.
Capacity is a, it's sort of a tough way to look at the building because sometimes you can have classes that are very small numbers. We have, we have three supported learning centers up there with, with smaller class-size numbers than you might have in a general ed classroom.
A gentleman over here stood up.
The gentleman over here is the principal of Stratton School.
Do you have additional information that'll help Mr. James?
Perhaps he might be able to lighten us further. Thank you, Dr. Bodie.
All right. Mr. Hannah?
Dr. Bodie, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Hannah, I'm principal at Stratton School. Right now, those classrooms, or could-be classrooms, are being used for other programming. Right now, one of them is being used for teaching non-native English-speaking students. It's an entire classroom. We probably wouldn't need an entire classroom for that, so that's why it's a swing space. Another is an administrative suite for special education, which again can be contracted into some other environment. And then finally, the third one is a classroom, but as Dr. Bodie mentioned, it's currently servicing a special education population, which, again, if pressed, we could contract into another special education classroom.
So as the principal, you feel comfortable that after the rebuild, given the projections, you'll be in good shape as far as space?
Very.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peluso?
I like to keep things simple. When you have a school committee, a finance committee, a capital planning committee, a town building committee, a paid architect, I assume that's who that fellow was, right? And you have people who say, this is what we need, right? Now, we can spend a lot of time, because I guess everybody in this room has an engineering degree, and I'm sure everybody in this room are architects as well, and I do understand that it is our job to look at the cost of everything and the whole bit. But it does come down to something simple. Let's do it right. That's all. Either yes or no, but do it right.
Thank you, Mr. Peluso. Mr. McCabe, Mark?
Mark McCabe, Precinct 2. I stand to terminate all debate on Articles 2 and 3 and all matters before.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on Articles 2 and 3. We're going to take a vote on that article, as soon as Michael's ready. It's a two-third vote. One yes, two no. Michael McCabe, who just spoke? Ready?
One vote.
One yes, two no. This is to terminate debate on Articles 2 and 3. Yeah. We have a motion to terminate debate. It is in the affirmative of 176 to 20. Debate is terminated on Article 2 and 3. So we have before us a recommended vote to the Finance Committee. First, we're going to do Article 2, the sum of $31 million. This does require bonding, so we're going to use our clickers. It's a two-third vote. So, 3.1?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. 3.1 million. It's a good thing these things don't have to be read out. Soon as you're ready, Michael. And go ahead and vote. One, yes. Two, put the money. Two, no, you don't want to do it. One for yes, two for no. Is an affirmative vote, 194, and the positive four in the negative. That's a pretty overwhelming vote, folks. Thank you very much. Okay, we have before us, we have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee. And this, again, is for borrowing. I'm not going to read the numbers out because there's a lot of them. Soon as we're ready. Again, it's a two-third vote. We'll use our clickers. And go ahead and vote. One for yes, two for no. One hundred ninety-nine, the affirmative zero. It's a unanimous. It's a unanimous vote, and I so declare it. Thank you very much. The town appreciates it. Now, that brings us, closes Article Two and Three, brings us to Article Four. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee. Mr. Tosti.
Mr. Moderator, respectfully request to town meeting for ten minutes for myself and for the town manager. In other words, total.
Mr. Tosti has requested ten minutes. All in favor, please say yes. Opposed? You have your ten minutes, Mr. Tosti.
Okay, actually, I'm going to take one minute and the manager will take the rest. Town manager will follow me as chairman of the Enrollment Task Force to explain what the group has done to date and the topics going forward. I will explain why the vote is worded the way it is. Before the vote, before the bids came in on the Stratton modulators, we had planned to use funds remaining from the police station project to be transferred to the capital budget for this purpose, for the Thompson modulators. But when the bids came in, so far over the estimates, all of the remaining monies in the capital budget had to be used for the Stratton School. I mean, we had to fund it, we had to keep going. And so we basically stripped out all the remaining accounts. So there was no money left in the capital budget. Since the tax rate has been set, decision was made, or the medical recommendation, to utilize the town's reserve fund, which had been built up a little bit higher each year over the years to an amount that could take care of this, to get the project going. But since the article was already before the town meeting in the warrant, the Finance Committee felt it was inappropriate to not ask the town meeting for their opinion. So that is the purpose of this vote. It's a resolution for you to see if you will support this. If you vote no, the Finance Committee will not vote to transfer the money for the modulators for the Thompson. If you vote yes, we will proceed to get this project moving as soon as possible. I'd like to ask the town manager to give the background on the Enrollment Task Force and what's happened to date. Thank you.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Excuse my voice. I'll do my best to not use all eight minutes. So building on what Chairman Tosti just spoke about, going back into the fall, or actually back into the summer, after looking at there being several years of enrollment growth within the school district, the school department decided that it was very appropriate to perform a demographic study to analyze the growth and provide a future-looking forecast in terms of the enrollment and what it would look like over the course of the next decade. So that forecast was produced by Dr. McKibben. And some of you may have came to the public meeting that the school committee held, where that forecast was discussed in detail. And initially, that forecast predicted the growth of approximately a thousand students over the next ten years in the Arlington School District. Since the original release, when we got actual numbers on October one of this past fall, that number's been modified by Dr. McKibben and reduced to approximately seven hundred in students to grow over the next ten years. So this forecast prompted the superintendent and I, after consultation with both the Board of Selectmen and the school committee, to call together a task force that we named the School Enrollment Task Force to study and address the capacity issues that this forecasted growth would cause in terms of space in our actual school buildings. This task force was made up of myself, the superintendent, three members of the school committee, two members of the Board of Selectmen, the chairman of the Finance Committee, chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, and the chairman of the Permanent Town Building Committee. We met a number of times over the course of late 2015, and we've met once in 2016. And thus far, there's been a few key agreements that led to this recommendation or resolution here tonight. That agreement that was unanimously decided by the task force was to go forward and identify the need for two modular classrooms at the Thompson School next year to address capacity issues. And also, there was a more conceptual agreement about the need to address, excuse me, space issues at the Odison Middle School based on forecasts. A few other areas that we're going to continue to look at, beginning at our next meeting scheduled currently for February twenty-third, we'll be looking at potential classroom and shared space expansion, permanent expansion at the Thompson School. And also, the need to process and decide on what the proper course of action is at the Odison Middle School, whether it be onsite or at another site in town. So we have a lot of work to do over the course of the rest of this winter and spring leading up to town meeting. And what the hope is that we'll have, at the very least, a report, but most likely recommendations for this town meeting to consider at the spring for further addressing of these space needs that our enrollment growth is causing. And happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Harrington?
Stephen Harrington, Precinct Thirteen. I have two amendments to this article. I don't oppose modulators at the Thompson. But this is a horrible funding argument. You can see that it's rushed, and it's not a good idea. I'm going to try to convince you that it's not a good idea. So my first amendment, if I could have it up on the screen, is I just want to change three words. From the town's reserve fund to the town's capital budget. And why does it matter? We're building, we're spending capital expense. We're spending money that's a capital expense. The reserve fund is for operating expenses. It's so that we don't have to have another override for a number of years. If we're going to spend the money out of the reserve fund, it puts Arlington in a less physically secure position. And what that means is that you may get those new classrooms, but you're going to have services cut in about a year or two. You're going to hear all this talk about how we can't afford teachers because we need another override. This is a bad idea to take the money out of the town's reserves. It's a much better idea to take it out of the capital budget. Now, people are going to say, oh, but, you know, where are you going to get the money from in the capital budget? The capital budget's not on here. It's not up. If this was a spring discussion, it could be very clear where it's coming out of the capital budget. We could have gone through the whole discussion of it. But because it's being jammed in at the last minute, and by the way, there's no dollar value associated with this appropriation. So you're in a position to offer no dollar value. You're voting on something that you're just giving a blank check out of the operating account, cash, to do something that belongs in the capital expense, in the capital budget. And so the Second Amendment, I'll ask you to put that up, shows that, where we can get it from. We can easily get this from using Community Preservation Act money in a very good way. And the way that you do, I see Clarissa and the people who pushed for the CPA, who told us that the CPA was going to be used on capital expenses so that we could have a better budget. Well, hold them to their promise. We can use the CPA money to fund the next two playground rebuilds that are scheduled for 2017 and 2018, of about a half a million dollars each. We can use that CPA money for that. No one's decided yet where the CPA money's going to go. We can then buy those modulators, rent them, through the capital budget. No extra cost keeps Arlington on a good financial footing. This article does not put us on a good financial footing. And it really comes down to, you know, a question of values for Ms. Rowe and the people who supported the CPA, whether you really want to support education in the town or spend it on things like a swamp in East Arlington. And that's really, for you people up there too. You're all East Arlington residents. Whether you want to educate your kids or dump it into a hole in the ground really is your choice. But by passing it as it stands, you're going to put Arlington in a bad position. And there's already rumors of an override. When the talk starts to happen, believe me, services are going to be cut. And they'll be cut in the schools. And you might have modular classrooms, but you won't have the teachers to fill them. So I urge you to vote yes on amendment that will change it to the capital budget and yes to use the CPA funds to keep Arlington on a good financial footing. Thank you.
Okay, we have two amendments on the table. His first one is the town reserve fund. Do I have a second on that? Been seconded. He has a second amendment on the use of the CPA money. Do we have a second on that? Okay, they've both been seconded. They are before us. Mr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. King Carter, Precinct Twenty. A member of the Finance Committee. I yield all of my time to Mariah Tyrell, resident of Arlington, who's entitled to address the meeting by right.
Yes, she is. Name and precinct and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Mariah Tyrell. Live at Precinct Seven at eighty-seven Harlow Street. I currently have three children at the Thompson Elementary School, a fifth grader, a third grader, a kindergarten, and a kindergartner, as well as a three-year-old that will enter in the fall of 2018. Yes, I am one of the main reasons that the town of Arlington is facing these enrollment challenges. I stand before you tonight in support of the Finance Committee's recommendation to add two temporary classrooms at Thompson for next year because they are desperately needed. I am hoping that the slides I am about to show you will demonstrate the urgency of this need. At the same time, I stand in disagreement with the School Enrollment Task Force's decision to not recommend additional measures at this time, specifically the appropriation of money for architectural plans and designs for a permanent addition. The enrollment challenges at Thompson and in East Arlington in particular are just beginning. We have a long road ahead of us. The children on this slide are my own, William, Caroline, Lucy, and Peter. Since they are situated within the timeframe of the school's projected growth, I thought I would use them tonight to show you how the enrollment challenges are affecting them and all of their fellow classmates. Next slide, please. This is my oldest son, William, and his friend Dylan, who are in fifth grade this year. They attended kindergarten at the old Thompson School building, spent two years at the Stratton School during the rebuild, and came back to the brand-new school for third grade. Their class sizes have been creeping up every year since coming back to the new school. And now William is in a class of thirty and Dylan twenty-nine. These boys have more students in their classes than any other elementary class across the district. And this was because there was not another classroom available for a third section, that is, a third class for the fifth graders. The Thompson School with nineteen classrooms is over its capacity by one. And thus, on a daily basis, these fifth graders have less face time with their teacher than any other elementary school student. Next slide, please. Most of you here in the room tonight have probably heard about what is referred to as the McKibben Report, which projects the enrollment growth in all of our schools for the next ten years. Here is a graph that shows the growth at the Thompson School based on McKibben's projections. The blue arched line demonstrates how our enrollment will grow over the next ten years. The orange straight line on the bottom demonstrates what the school was built for, three hundred and eighty students. As you can see, the Thompson School is just beginning its climb. The red star on the chart shows that our current enrollment is four hundred and thirty-five students. This star is actually above McKibben's newest projections, which were just released in December, thus indicating that his projections for our growth may actually be too low. It's also important to note that since school started in September, our enrollment has grown by ten students. While it looks like the graph starts to drop off after the ten-year period, in fact, the projections state that four hundred and eighty students is where the school will level out. This is one hundred students higher than the building's capacity. Next slide, please. This next picture is my daughter Caroline. She is currently in third grade. Next year, when the two fifth grades leave Thompson and the projected number of four kindergarten classes come in, the school will be two classrooms too small. If portable classrooms are not approved for the Thompson School tonight, Caroline's class could be chosen as the class to be blended, which means her four current sections could become three, and her class would likely have twenty-seven or more kids in it. If portable classes are not approved tonight, it also means that the art room will be turned into a classroom. If the art room is taken away, the art teachers will visit each room with their supplies on a cart. And the Thompson School will be the only school in the district without a dedicated art room. It will be very hard for the students to be able to complete the level and kinds of projects they currently do, such as Caroline's painting in this photo. It would be a huge detriment to all of the students in the school to lose such a valuable, enriching space. As I stated at the beginning, I fully support the recommendation by the Finance Committee to fund two modular classrooms for next fall as I do not want to see Caroline and her fellow students at the Thompson School miss out on valuable educational milestones that will be lost in overcrowded classrooms. Next slide, please. But I also have two other children that you see here in this slide. Lucy is currently in kindergarten at the Thompson School. And if a plan for permanent construction is not in place and executed for the fall of 2018, she is projected to experience class sizes of twenty-seven or more students by the time she is in second grade. Next slide, please. By the time Lucy is in second grade, there are projected to be four hundred and eighty-two students in the school that was built for three hundred and eighty. And class sizes for every grade will be large. By the time Peter is in third grade, the enrollment will have reached its peak of five hundred students. With smaller class sizes, teachers can get to know their students better and thus ensure that each student receives appropriate instruction based on their styles and needs. This is especially true for students from low-income families and for English language learners. The Thompson School and the Hardy School both have the highest number of students in both of these categories than any other school in the district. That is why it is especially critical that our school has the space that it needs. So please vote yes tonight on this article to provide a one-year Band-Aid at the Thompson. But know that this will not solve the problem long term and that additional steps will soon need to be taken. William, Caroline, Lucy, Peter, and all of their classmates and future classmates, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. L. Mr. Liggett? Stephen Liggett? Oh, he had his hand up. Don't know where he went. Mr. Leonard? Oh, wait, he's getting up. He heard me. Wait, John. The first guy got up. You know, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Liggett, Precinct Nine. Excellent. Good evening. I am the proud parent of two children in the Arlington Public Schools, a third grader at Thompson and a sixth grader at Odison. I stand before you tonight in support of Article Four, which will provide critically needed classroom space at the Thompson Elementary next year. I stand here to applaud the decision by the School Enrollment Task Force to recommend adding two modular classrooms for next year so that we will be able to keep our art room instead of turning it into another classroom. I stand here to thank the Finance and Capital Planning Committees for their efforts to secure the funding, to actually pay for those modular classrooms, so that we anticipate having only one grade with class sizes of twenty-six or above. It would be far worse if we didn't have the modulators. I stand here to express my gratitude for the support shown by the school committee, the facilities subcommittee, and Dr. Bodie as they explored alternatives and proposed solutions. I also stand here to say that two modulators at Thompson is not enough. Next slide, please. As you can see from the slide behind me, which is not that sheet. My thing's got... There we go. The chart behind me is showing the revised enrollment projections commissioned by the town last month, the McKibben Report, for only Thompson. Since that report, as Mariah mentioned, is actually too low, I updated the numbers to use the current enrollment of four hundred and thirty-five students instead of the projected enrollment of four hundred and twenty-five. The numbers on the chart show how many students above or below the number the school was actually intended to have. So the zero line represents the as-built capacity. Above that, which is where the line is very clearly, is showing that we have more kids and additional crowding. With the current of four hundred and thirty-five students, the red dashed line indicates that for this school year we have fifty-four more students in the school than it was built to hold. Next year, Thompson enrollment is projected to increase significantly, which will be addressed by Article Four, which hopefully will pass. However, the increase continues beyond next year, at which point we will need additional space. So far, I've only spoken about Thompson because that is the official scope of Article Four. The reality is that this is a much larger problem than just Thompson. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Here you can see that the enrollment at the other elementary schools, which is the target of this slide, uh, is also above capacity in many schools. The enrollment at Bishop, the yellow line, is significantly above the capacity it was built for. It isn't projected to increase at as dramatic a rate as the Thompson, but they are already crowded, and it will increase. Hardy, the dotted red line, will see increases similar to that of Thompson, and face the same challenges, trailing one to two years behind. And that does not include the potential impact of the Mugar property should that project move forward. Next slide, please. Voting yes for Article 4, which I strongly urge all of you to do, is one simple step we can take tonight to reduce the overcrowding at Thompson for next year. But the growth in the school enrollment is a town-wide challenge, and we clearly have a lot more work ahead of us to meet those challenges. To that end, I will be submitting this exact article for our Spring Town Meeting, so that this body will have an opportunity to continue this dialogue. It is not clear today exactly what the best options are, or the best combination of options are, to address the enrollment challenges we face. There are many opinions, and not nearly enough facts at this point, to decide which options are the best to address both the short-term and the strategic needs of our community, to determine which options best align with the values that we espouse for educating our children. Between now and April, we need to figure out which of these options, those that you see above or something else, are the appropriate ones that we want to recommend to move forward. In April, this body will have an opportunity to approve the next steps. Final slide, please. This final slide includes the enrollment projections for the Addison Middle School. I think this is a case where a picture truly is worth a thousand words. I look forward to working with many of you in the coming weeks, and I imagine I'll be standing before you once again in April. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. Mr. Leonard. We're not the English Parliament. Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, John Leonard, Precinct 17. Having a little bit of trouble with this particular article. Ladies and gentlemen of Town Meeting, in the previous two votes, Article 2, the school was named, and the price was named. And Article 3, the school was named, and the price appropriation was named. And Article 4, which we're talking about right now, the school is named, but it's not named in what I would call the nuts and bolts of the article. In the, in the article itself, it's calling for at any of the town's school buildings. Well, we have seven elementary schools, a middle school, a high school, and as far as I can read this, it basically means that if anything comes up at any of those schools in the future, this is the sum of money that we're talking about, that we can, any particular time turn around and say, "The Bishop needs this, the Downer needs this, et cetera." Ladies and gentlemen, you gave us the approval in Article 4, so we're doing this by appropriating more and more money. What I would have liked to have seen is that the removal, I know it's an amendment, Mr. Moderator, and I actually had the amendment made up, but I lost it, to remove at any of the town's school building, and we were talking about in the voted section that it is the Thompson School, I would have liked to have seen the Thompson School included in place of at any of the town's school building.
I'm, I'm not following. I'm reading, "The Town Meeting Supports Transfer Funds by the Finance Committee from the Town Reserve Fund, blah, 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 for temporary classroom space for Thompson School."
I'm talking, I have a copy here of the Finance Committee.
You're talking about the recommended vote, though.
It says to see if the, to see if the town will vote a sum of money, et cetera, et cetera, at any of the town's...
You're reading the warrant, John. You gotta read the recommended vote, remember? You have the recommended vote in front of you. The recommended vote, I'm gonna read it for you, it's in your Finance Committee report. "Town Meeting Supports a Transfer of Funds by the Finance Committee from the Town's Reserve Funds of a Sum of Money to Fund Temporary Classroom Space for the Thompson School and for Costs Incidental and Related There Too." So remember, we, we get the warrant that warns everybody back weeks ago, and we got the, unfortunately, we got it like Friday or Saturday, the FinCom report that has the recommended vote that we're voting on today. You're reading the warrant.
All right, well, I admit that maybe where I'm confused is I don't see that the Thompson is up there in the warrant where it is in the Stratton on the previous two votes.
Mr. Chaplaine's gonna take a second and show you the recommended vote of the FinCom.
May I, Mr. Moderator, just take a shot at explaining to John our rationale?
Okay.
Adam Chaplaine, Town Manager. So, Mr. Leonard, when we filed this warrant article, we wanted to provide maximum flexibility for the School Enrollment Task Force to consider what its recommendations would be. Before we came to the final recommendation to place two modulators at Thompson, there was a lot of discussion about where a solution might lie in terms of temporary solutions for space, so we worded the article generally so that we would have maximum flexibility, and then the vote itself is what contains the reference to the Thompson School for the placement of the modulators.
Interesting.
Does that clarify it, John?
It clarifies it a little bit, Mr. Moderator.
Okay.
Well, again, I support Mr. Harrington's two amendments. I think, if nothing else, we should have a number figure on this article in some manner, shape, or form, as we did on the previous two articles. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Mr. Carmen. You had your hand up at one point. No? Okay. John Deist? I thought you did.
John Deist, Precinct 13, and a member of the Finance Committee. Uh, I'd like to sort of comment to you about how we live our lives. We do that in two ways. There's a long-term planning. For example, at the end of this meeting, I plan to drive home and go to bed. But I don't plan precisely how I'm gonna go home. I might go, uh, one or two streets or three-street, different paths to go home. A car may approach me, and I'll have to stop, or I might get a red light. That's short-term planning. It's very uncertain. The attendance in these schools is very uncertain. Now, I'm not saying that any of these graphs are inappropriate, but you have to realize that all around those graphs, all kinds of uncertainty. That's exactly what the Reserve Fund is for, to fund situations of uncertainty. The situation we have right now with these modules is a certain situation that occurred almost completely independently of the long-term planning of the Capital Planning Committee. The Capital Planning Committee projects and very, and in a very orderly fashion, recommends funding for us, and then we vote the money to do the things, generally speaking, that the planning, the Capital Plan Committee has recommended to us. I can't think of a time in the past twenty years or so when we didn't pretty much vote the capital plan as it was put forward to us. But it's a plan that's based on long-term projections, and they cannot handle uncertainties. That's exactly what the Reserve Fund is for, to handle the uncertainties that arise as a result of something like what just happened at the Thompson School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Moderator.
Name and precinct?
Oh, I'm sorry, E.J. Harris, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, I feel like I don't have a lot of facts about this article, and I hate that feeling, so with your indulgence, I'd like to take a little bit of a fishing expedition. The first question I had about the proposed amendment is, can the CPA money be lawfully used in the way the amendment proposes?
We, as a Town Meeting, cannot direct the CPA how to spend the money. The CPA can use the money for parks and recreations.
So in principle, it could be used in the way it suggests, even though we have no control over whether it would be? Is that correct?
At their prerogative to our, we get to eventually get a thumbs up or down vote on it, is that correct? Yep.
All right. But we can't amend whatever the committee proposes? Is that, do I have that right?
Mr. Heim?
We can only, we can only up or down? All right.
Well, that's why we have Town Council. Can you?
Yeah. I'd love to hear from a lawyer.
So the Community Preservation Committee will be the one, basically vetting proposals for use of CPA funds. If, um, the Town Meeting essentially votes to approve or not approve those monies, if the Town Meeting doesn't approve, doesn't vote to approve it, the money stays in the CPA fund.
All right. Can anybody ballpark how much money we're talking about? A little bit?
Mr. Chaplaine.
Kinda? Something?
Adam Chaplaine, Town Manager. So we began, uh, negotiations or discussions with the modular provider for the Stratton School project, and asked if they could consider amending their contract to provide two additional modular classrooms for next year for the Thompson School, and the range we've looked at is somewhere between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand for two classrooms.
All right. Excellent. How much is in the Reserve Fund-ish? Again?
Mr. Foskett? Oh, no, excuse me, Mr. Tosti has any answer.
One million dollars. There's an extra two hundred thousand that is set aside for special education in the school, so for general purposes, one million dollars.
So we're using a fifth of it-ish, hopefully. All right. Can... And this is only for one year, that was the other thing, is there's no time scale in this article. Do we anticipate this being, like, what we are discussing right now is only for the next school year, is that correct? And like, the enrollment task force plans to give us a longer-term proposal in the spring?
Adam Chaplaine, Town Manager. So we, the quote I mentioned would be based on a one-year lease. We are gonna get some additional quotes in terms of whether or not we might purchase these for future needs, lease them on a longer-term basis, and see whether or not it makes it more cost-competitive, but ultimately, one of the considerations that the task force will be looking at is permanent construction at the Thompson, and that would make these modulators not needed at that facility.
And, Mr. Moderator, would it be the committee's, you might wanna say, would it be the committee's hope, I apologize, would it be the committee's hope to be able to report more fully on those questions at the regular Town Meeting in the spring? All right. Um, I think that's quite enough fish for now. The Book of Revelation warns us of wars and rumors of wars. I feel the municipal version is overrides and rumors of overrides. Um, I definitely feel the level of trepidation that I feel when I read the Book of Revelation, but I think I'm gonna end up supporting this article.
Mr. Foskett, you had your hand up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Charles Foskett, Precinct 8, and I'm Vice Chairman of the Finance Committee, as well as Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee. And I'd like to address the two proposed amendments to this article. First of all, I'm concerned that the proposer of the amendments is confused about the use of the Reserve Fund versus the use of an override stabilization fund. When he raised the question of long-term overrides or what's gonna happen to our operating budget, that's really governed by the override stabilization fund, into which we vote money in the town when there's an override. And we use that to stabilize the budget. Right now, I think it's been six years since the last override, and it probably goes seven or eight years before we have to look at another override. This is a long-term funding mechanism. On the other hand, the Reserve Fund, the one point two million dollars that Mr. Tosti just mentioned, is voted by you every year at Town Meeting. It's, it's, uh, I forget, I forget the, here it is, it's Budget Number 26, and we voted last year, one point two million dollars. And this is used, as Mr. Deist said, for emergencies, for problems, for things that are not anticipated. So last year, as I recall, we used a certain large amount of the Reserve Fund, believe it or not, for snow. Now, this year, we have a problem with our schools, and it's a problem that, you know, as Yogi Berra said, predicting, making predictions is hard, especially when they're about the future. And the, and the, um, the school population has been growing faster than people anticipated, so we have to address it, but this article that's being proposed is going to address it out of the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund. And what, and the Finance Committee has the authority to spend up to all of that one point two million dollars without the vote at Town Meeting. But what Mr. Tosti said is, "We don't wanna spend that money unless you support this program." That's what we're looking for. Now, I'd like to address the, the second proposed amendment, which is use of the CPA funds. Now, some of you might remember that I opposed the CPA Act when it was being voted by the town. However, just like I pointed out to you earlier, that the citizens of the town voted by a large majority to rebuild those schools sixteen years ago, the citizens of the town voted for the CPA Act, and as Town Meeting members, we have to respect that. So last year, at the last annual Town Meeting, the Capital Planning Committee, on Page 5, reported on the Community Preservation Act, and I'll read it to you. "The current capital plan has segregated most such eligible expenditures," that is, CPA-eligible expenditures, "into a funding category of quote-unquote CPA." You may remember, we have bond, cash, other, now we have bond, cash, other, and CPA. If CPA fund, uh, well, we, we make this segregation so that the CPA Committee, at the time we wrote this, it hadn't yet been formed, the CPA Committee could decide on their own, as an independent organization, whether or not to fund those particular projects. And we said, "If CPA funding is unavailable, the Capital Planning Committee remains committed to considering such projects in the capital plan in the future." Now, when we segregated those projects into the CPA category, that left some money in the capital budget, in the long-term capital plan, and what did we do with it? Let me tell you what we did with it. It's funding the Stratton. You voted for it tonight with the, in Articles 2 and 3. The non-exempt expenses that you voted for tonight were freed up by the CPA vote of last year. And this will be reflected in the five-year capital plan that you will see at the annual Town Meeting. So what I'm trying to tell you is that, first of all, the use of the Reserve Fund that Mr. Tosti has proposed is perfectly legitimate, rational, and in fact, should be done. And secondly, it's both unreasonable, from a governance viewpoint, for us to demand that the CPA Committee spend money on recreation. And secondly, even if we demanded it, the money in the capital budget has already been put into the Stratton School. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, it's nine-thirty, we're gonna take a short seven-minute break. We come back, Mr. Oster will have the floor. Please come in and take your seat, we're gonna get going again. Please come in. Let's go. Mr. Tremblay, you can take your coat off and stay a few minutes. Yeah, sit down, have a seat, take your coat off, make something on. Mr. Oster has the floor. Please come in and be quiet. That's better, I feel comfortable now. I feel comfortable now. Adam Oster. Adam, you're up. You had your hand up, right? Did you have your hand up?
I did.
Yeah, you're up.
I thought I was talking.
Now you are.
Mr. Moderator, Adam Oster, Precinct 3, and I move to end debate and vote immediately on everything before us.
On all matters before the motion?
On all matters before us, under the article.
Oh, okay. We have a motion to terminate debate on all matters under the article. It's been seconded. All right, soon as we're ready, we'll take a vote to terminate debate. All in favor of terminating debate, press 1 for yes, no for you do not want to terminate debate. 1 for yes, 2 for no. Debate is terminated. 173 in the affirmative, 15 in the negative. Debate's terminated. That brings us to the actual votes. So we're going to proceed as follows. First, we're going to vote on Mr. Harrington's shorter amendment that reads, change the words, "Town Reserve Fund to Capital Budget." So first, we're going to have a yes or no vote to amend, to include that. Is that clear? Yes, okay. So as soon as you're ready, go ahead and vote 1, yes to amend, 2, no you do not want to amend it. 1 to amend, 2, no you don't. It is a negative vote, 163 in the negative, 27, the amendment loses. That ends that. We have now the longer of the two amendments from Mr. Harrington directing us, directing the CPA money to be used in a certain way. Soon as we're ready, we'll vote 1, yes you want to amend and add that to the recommended vote, 2, no you do not. Go ahead and vote 1, yes, 2, no. That amendment also loses, 166 in the negative, 26 in the affirmative. So that does not prevail either. So now we have before us the recommended vote of the Finance Committee as presented without amendment. So we're going to vote for that, 1, yes, 2, no. And go ahead and vote 1, yes, 2, no. That passes, 182 in the affirmative, 11 in the negative. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 4. We have now before us Article 5, collective bargaining. Mr. Tosti, do you wish to speak to this?
Very briefly, this is the collective bargaining agreement between the town and Local 680. With this settlement, the, all of the town unions will have been settled through July 1, 2018. It's all the same percentages, 2 percent, and these taken from funds that you appropriated into a wage reserve last year on this. So the Finance Committee unanimously recommends favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tosti. Ma'am.
Hi. Good evening. Linda Hansen, Precinct 7. I'm also the President of the Arlington Education Association. I rise to say that, yes, I will be voting to ratify this collective bargaining agreement this evening. But I'm also here at the front of the room to talk to you, to just raise the question about the direction the town is taking in terms of contracting out the custodial jobs that belong to this union that come under this contract and transferring formerly union jobs to private contractors. Maybe you saw some sign holders out there this evening. Some of the jobs have already been switched over and others are in the process.
Ma'am?
So I guess it comes under this contract?
But you're really not in school.
Okay, so...
That's something you have to bring up with the school committee, how they hire and who they hire and who they don't hire.
Well, I guess I just felt it was relevant because it does come under this contract.
We're just, funding the contracts is passed. We don't just, the town meeting, we don't determine hiring and firing and staffing priorities. That's up to the manager and the school committee.
All right. Well, although now it comes under the town facilities, the combined facilities director, right? And then under the town manager?
Adam, is that right? Okay, yes. So you have to bring up your questions to the selectmen and the manager.
Okay.
I'm sorry, that's not within our purview. Anyone else wish to speak to the article? Hearing none. We have before us a recommended vote of the Finance Committee for the union. Local 680 funding contract ready, so 1 for yes you agree, 2, no. As soon as we're ready, take a vote on that. And go ahead and vote 1, yes, 2, no. If you're in favor, 1. It's an affirmative vote, it's unanimous vote, 182 to 0. I so declare it. That terminates Article 5. That brings us to Article 6. We have a recommended vote on Article 6 of no action. If I've built a selectman and the FinCom, all in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's recommended vote of no action, I so declare, it's unanimous. That closes Article 6, brings us to Article 7. Minuteman Regional Technical School, Amendment to the District Agreement. Who's going to speak to this first? 7.
7 is no action.
Oh, 7's a no action, 2, I'm sorry.
7 is no action, but just to send you to Mr. Moderator.
Article 7, no action. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It is recommended vote of no action, and so I so declare it. That brings us to Article 8. I'm sorry, everybody. Mr. Dunn has arisen under 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Dan Dunn, member of the Board of Selectmen. When you talk about Minuteman, it's often hard to choose where to start. There's more than 40 years of history, and it all matters to some degree. I'm choosing to start with May of 2010. Minuteman was seeking funds for a feasibility study for a new school, and Arlington was loath to provide them without a new regional agreement. This town meeting approved Article 58, which approved the funds so long as Minuteman agreed to create a regional agreement task force, and it specified certain terms that needed to be considered. Minuteman agreed, and the task force moved forward in 2010 and 2011. Progress is made, but the result was not agreeable to all towns. A second group was created, built on the work of the first, and met through 2012 and 2013. The result was a proposal from the Minuteman School Committee that went to all 16 towns in the spring of 2014. 10 towns voted yes, including Arlington and Lexington. One voted no, Wayland, and five didn't vote, including Boxborough, Lincoln, and Belmont. That was spring of 2014. In the spring of 2015, this past year, there were efforts to get the remaining six towns on board. They all failed. Wayland and Boxborough in particular were not satisfied that they would have the ability to withdraw from the district, which they really wanted. The stalemate persisted until October 28th of this past year. Weston hosted a meeting of the members of 16 boards of selectmen, and the selectman for Boxborough, Vince Amoroso, proposed a framework where his town could both approve the proposed regional agreement and be certain that the town would be permitted to leave. That framework is a part of the agreement that we're voting on tonight. There are seven towns who are considering leaving the district. Each of those seven towns is having a stay-or-go vote at their special town meeting, and also voting to approve this regional agreement. Our approval of the regional agreement is our consent to let them leave. On March 1st, the votes will be done. My personal estimation that four towns are likely to leave, and three of them are going to have very interesting town meetings. That proposal broke the logjam, and for the next 50 days, there were a flurry of meetings, phone calls, emails, negotiations between the selectmen from 16 towns. The result is the proposed regional agreement we are voting on tonight. So that's enough about the history. Let's talk about this proposal. I want to clearly state that this vote does not ask for any appropriation. Further, the vote tonight makes no commitment to the building project that Minuteman is going to propose for our consideration at the spring town meeting. The building project is a separate issue that will receive due consideration in the future. What tonight's vote does do is pave the way for a better Minuteman. In your Board of Selectmen's packet, I meant to bring mine up, and I forgot. Open it up, and you can flip, and you flip past the red line version, and you slip past the final version, and you'll get to three pages that are titled "Side-by-Side Comparison." That comparison was provided by Minuteman. If you look at that side-by-side comparison, the second row I want to call out because it means that Arlington is going to pay a smaller share of any future capital budget because of the change in the calculations, whether it's the project that's currently under proposal or a future one, you know, decades in the future, we're getting a better deal based on, because of that second row. The third row is perhaps the most important of them all. That change means that Arlington will finally get a proportional vote in the governance of Minuteman. So will Lexington, and so will Belmont. The importance of this governance change cannot be overstated. All of these highlights, and some of the changes that didn't make that highlight real, matter. I don't have time to go through them all here. I'm ready to answer any questions you may have, and Minuteman Superintendent Ed Buquillen is here to answer questions as well. This agreement gives Arlington more power to control our own participation within the region. I understand that there is a substitute motion coming, and I have provided a response to it, which you can find on your chairs. The only point I wish to make right now is that we're working on a deadline. The selectmen from 16 towns built this framework to work fast, and we all agreed to call special town meetings and resolve the regional agreement by March 1st. The substitute motion would kill this deal. This proposal deserves a clean vote, a yes or a no. The Board of Selectmen voted tonight, it's a 5-0 support, not 4-0, as is in the, we are up to five votes. It has the support of the Finance Committee and the support of the Capital Planning Committee. We ask for your support for the motion as put forth by the selectmen.
Also available is our school committee Minuteman representative, Sue Scheffler, if you have any questions of her.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Hayner, Precinct 2. The purpose of this motion is to establish a committee that will provide town meeting with critical financial and budgetary information to make an informed decision. It would be expected that the proposed committee would determine answers to some of the following questions. What is the number of in-district students that would make Minuteman Tech financially solvent? What is the average cost of an in-district tuition and out-of-district tuition under the current agreement compared to under the proposed agreement? What, if anything, will the new district agreement do to reduce the current overreliance on out-of-district students? Has a five-year projection been done on what the tuition costs will be in the new agreement goes into effect? If not, why? As stated in the December 2015 meeting of the Finance Committee, it is currently estimated that Arlington's share of the Minuteman rebuild is approximately $2 million annually. I'm not opposed to this agreement. Support this and adjourn the meeting to a date prior to March 1st, and then decide on a motion and added information. One other minor thing, I've not made a lot of friends in doing this, okay? I need to also let you know, this is my wife's birthday, and this is how we're spending it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayner. Do I have a second for Mr. Hayner's motion? Seconded, okay.
Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I served as a member of the Minuteman School Committee from 1997 to 2001. So I'm bookended on the first and last articles, it's something that I've been involved with for a very long time. This is a reform urgently needed. The one thing I have to say is that the selectmen of the 16 towns really worked hard on this. And I know that Mr. Dunn has been working tirelessly for more hours than he can count working with other towns to come up with a resolution of this. And I think this town owes a debt of gratitude to the work that Mr. Dunn has done with the remaining selectmen of the other 16 towns over the past few months. These are vital reforms. And the fact is, is when I was on the committee, I'd be sitting next to the representative from Dover who had one child in the district enrolled, not his child, one enrolled child from the town of Dover, where we had about 140. We were a third of the district, he was one, one four-hundredth of the district. And we all had equal votes. And to say that the governance of Minuteman was absolutely trivial to most of the towns in this district, you could get 22 percent of the population and a two-thirds majority, the governance was severely broken. This agreement solves that issue and gives us a foundation where we can have a reasonable governance structure that maybe another large town might want to join. And the loss of some very small towns out of the district governance structure will probably streamline the governance of the district and make it more advantageous for both Arlington and other large communities who are not yet members. I urge you not to support the amendment because adjourning the meeting will also cause all the other votes that we've done to be delayed, to be ratified. The votes aren't final till after the meeting adjourns, and then to approve this change of the regional agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dean Condon, Precinct 20, and a member of the Finance Committee, fellow town meeting members. So I was doing a calculation. Tonight marks the seventh year I have stood in this spot and talked about this topic, okay? So I have to voice a little bit of frustration when I'm told that after seven years of discussing this, without changing almost a sentence, that we now need a study committee. So, quick recap for anybody who hasn't been here the whole seven years. For a long time, Minuteman was a horribly governed school, right? We sent a third of the kids, we had a one-sixteenth of the vote. It was way too expensive. I mean, it was horrible management, it was just, it was a mess. But we couldn't do anything. And why couldn't we do anything? Because you needed 10 out of 16 towns to pass the budget. And the old administration of Minuteman would start in the order, those who have to pay the least, vote first, and then they'd come here and say, hey, guess what? Do whatever you want, we have the votes. Basically, go screw. Okay? So that went on for a while. And my, and my former Finance Committee colleague, Mr. Dan Dunn, used to stand up here when they would say that and say, that's fine. But eventually, they're going to want a new building. And when they want a new building, we are going to fight them to the death because they can't get past us at that point. And so, in 2010, they came before the town meeting with Article 58, request for a feasibility study. And this town meeting agreed to that feasibility study with Arlington's demands. And the demands were simple. You will stabilize enrollment, you will reform the spending in that school, and you will give us a regional agreement where we're not sending a third of the kids, paying a third of the cost, but only have one-sixteenth of the vote. You will actually treat Arlington with respect. And so we were lucky at that moment, right? Because the bad management of Minuteman walked out the door, and the good management of Minuteman, which now is in this, in the chair led by Dr. Buquillen, took, came, came on. And Dr. Buquillen stabilized enrollment, he got the school in a better financial position, he brought down the per pupil spending. But he didn't fix the regional agreement, right? Because what happened was, just sort of rolling forward again, in 2014, we, as Dan said, we put before you a draft regional agreement. And we said, look, you know, and we said, we want you to pass it. And I think, I stood here at the time and told you, it's not going to get through all 16 schools, but we need to move the goal line, and we need to figure out who the people are. are that aren't going to be with us. And so we took that vote, you, as a town meeting, affirmatively voted for that, and let me just check my notes for one second, I'll tell you exactly which vote it was. It was Article 21 of the 2014 town meeting. So you took that vote, okay? And so we talked about it some more, and we talked about it some more. And then last year, we had a building, we had building recommendations that came before you. And if you look at last year's Minuteman vote, which was on all of your seats, there's a slide called "The Building Project," and it goes on and on for one, two, three, four, five, six slides explaining the building. It talks about the five options we can have. It talks about how if we get this done by next year, we get 40 percent reimbursement, and if we don't, our reimbursement rate will lapse and it will go to 31 percent. But we also said at that time that we had a problem. And our problem, again, even with the deadline of June 30, 2016, to keep MSP reimbursement at 40 percent, is we didn't have a new regional agreement. Because as Dan said, the 2014 agreement failed in five communities. So, the whole, the whole circle, it all came full circle, right? Because up until 2011, when Dan came onto the Board of Selectmen, he used to stand here and give the Finance Committee's opposition to Minuteman. Then, that became my task for several years, but now we had to punch it over the goal line. And so Dan went back to Minuteman, and he said, okay, I'm going to broker this deal. I have the weight of the school committee, I have the weight of the finance committee, we've gotten affirmative town meeting votes, we have everything lined up, you guys are going to play ball with Arlington, you're going to work on this, and we're not going with the school. And so we bust our hump. It was in the newspaper, it was on local cable access. Everybody knew this was going on. And we finally got, we finally got our regional agreement that works, that has everything from 2014 with little, a few changes, okay? And so we bring it back to this town meetings, right? So now we're in the seventh year doing this, we have 10 or 11 articles we've put before you, and low and behold, we need a study committee. A study committee? For what? If there was a problem with this article, if there was a problem with this article, the time to say something was anywhere between seven years ago and about a month ago. That was the time to talk about it. The time to talk about it is not tonight. It is not from now to March 1st. And so I urge you to support this action. And look, I know some people will probably get up after me and say, this is a very expensive school. It is. We don't know how to pay for it right now. That's true. But I will close with what I've said every time I have stood up here, which is, we live in a 21st-century global economy where education of all sorts, whether it's education at Arlington High that will prepare you for college, you know, is necessary, or if it's vocational education to create the next generation of plumbers, or carpenters, or electricians, that is all critically necessary, right? And frankly, I don't think there's a heck of a lot of difference. Because if you've ever received a bill from your doctor and your electrician on the same day, I don't think you feel there's much difference. But we have to remember, the jobs, and why this is critically important, why we have to pay for this, and why we have to be, you know, behind this, is the jobs from 40 years ago where we could pass a child through the Arlington school system, or 50 years ago, and pass them through the Arlington school system, and kind of give them an okay education, and send them off to Waltham to a protected union job at Raytheon where they could, you know, do all things and make a great wage and support them. Those days are gone. And so we have to educate our children the best we can to provide them with the skills of the current economy so they can succeed. So again, I ask you to support this, and I ask you to defeat the substitute motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annie LaCorte, Precinct 15. Move the question on all matters before us.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate on all matters before us. All in favor of terminating debate, we'll press one when we get the green light. If you don't want to terminate debate, you'll press two. It was seconded. Okay, press one to terminate debate, two to keep talking about it. Debate is terminated. 168 in affirmative, 17 in the negative. That terminates debate on Article Eight. We have now before us the recommended, excuse me, Mr. Hayner's substitute motion, which would supplant the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen. So all in favor of Mr. Hayner's substitute motion, please vote yes by pressing one, vote That's a negative vote, 161 in the negative, 23 in the affirmative. Mr. Hayner's substitute fails. We now have before us the recommended vote of the Board of Selectmen. This is an up or down vote. One, yes to amend the, accept the recommended amendment to the district, and two, to not accept it. So, one for yes, you want to amend the district commit, agreement, two, you do not. It's an affirmative vote, 178 in the affirmative, five in the negative. Arlington has voted to amend the Minuteman School District.
Ladies and gentlemen, I do want to make one comment. There's been a lot of people that worked on that last article. Charlie Foskett did yeoman's work in getting this put together and getting to the sort of 10 to 6, and Dan Dunn has worked countless hours. Dan, do you still have a job? Okay, yeah, he still has his job, but he almost lost it with that, and I'd like to thank him very much. I move to take Article One from the table.
All in favor, Article One is on the table, off the table.
I move that the, this town meeting be dissolved.
All in favor of dissolving the special town meeting of January 2016, please say yes.
Yes!
All opposed? Town meeting is dissolved. Please return your clickers. This is our only night. If you bring it home, we're in big trouble. There's bins on every single door. Please return your clickers.